Can sit up here. Okay.
What's that?
Good evening. It's good to see all of you here. This evening, we're going to...I'm your mayor, if you don't know that. And we're here to give you some information, some new information maybe that you haven't seen before, and mostly to try to answer your questions. So, we're just going to start out with some introductions and a little bit of an intro, if you have something to start out with, Gary.
Sure. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Gary Tucker. I'm the city administrator, interim city administrator for the City of Haywarden. I was here for about 10 years, about that many years ago, it seems like. It's kind of like a boomerang, you come back, and then we have a flood, and oh my goodness. So, if you continue to have needs that are not being addressed, please contact the city offices at 515- or 551-2565. We've brought Brenna Rankin in, and she's been appointed as our flood relief coordinator. And so, that's her sole role, is to do everything that we can to help, any way that we can. So, please contact the city offices. There may be things that we haven't thought of as a city, and please don't hesitate to call and let us know. If you have any questions about anything, please give us a call. We do have a bilingual person on staff, so we can meet the needs of Spanish as well. We do have some current sign-ups sheets in our office as yet, for those of you who need help and with what. If anyone would like to volunteer, we have a list for that as well. And we would like to know the condition of your home, especially if it's been pretty seriously damaged, so that we can work more closely on some of those issues. There are still many cleaning supplies and N95 masks available at the city offices, if you need those while you're doing cleanup. There are still food items, personal hygiene and products, et cetera, available at the community center, and I believe those will be moving to the library next week, starting next week, if that's correct. And the city will continue to work with private developers, finding ways to add additional affordable housing, although that's going to take some time. Want to remind everyone that there are people out there that are very good scam artists during times like this, and are very willing to take your money and run, with you receiving no benefit. So, please make sure that you're dealing with credible contractors, preferably local ones, if you can. And if you have any questions about folks that are coming around to your house soliciting work, give us a call at City Hall, and we'll try to help you through that process. FEMA continues to be the resource responsible for assisting you financially with your damaged property. If you're a business owner, they'll most likely be directed to the SBA offices. The process is much slower than any of us would like, but most important thing is to get the best financial settlement we possibly can in the end. Unfortunately, the city has no control over the FEMA decisions or their financial offers to you, but we'll be more than happy to assist you through the process in any way that we can.
Thank you, Gary. Carol? Can everyone hear okay?
My arm of this big disaster is probably more directed toward business, finding available housing, providing available housing. We've been working diligently, as you all know, with some local developers to get some housing. We do have options available. Please contact my office. I will put you in touch with those people that are developing those properties, and we'll go ahead and try to get you placed in one. We want to keep you in Haywarden. We're excited about things going on in Haywarden, and it does continue to grow. We will have probably 30 to 40 new homes available and open to the public within the next eight to nine months. I know that sounds like a long time, but things will develop, you know, progress. They won't just wait eight months and then find out what we have. If you're a business owner in town, please give my office a call. We are offering 0% loans for a small amount, just to kind of help you get through. So, give my office a call.
Travis?
I'm Travis Waterman, the Public Works Director for the city. I'll give you a little update on the utilities and parks and things in the city. The wastewater plant is still running at high capacity. That's due to all the groundwater that's infiltrating into the sewer system. Everything's still running through the plant. There'd be quite a bit of upgrades that are going to be due over the next four months, six months, but we're diligently keep working on those. The water treatment plan is still running well. We're asking that no one waters their lawn for at least another week. We'll update you once we get two more wells back online. And I just wanted to discuss, the reason for that is for fire protection. We don't want to lower the reservoir levels of our reservoir and water tower for unneeded use. In case there is a fire, we want to make sure we have enough water for those emergencies. We appreciate everyone's patience with the water and sewer usage throughout this historic flood event. There's quite a few gas meters that have been shut off, if you're homeless flooded. Please let us know when you're ready to turn those back on. There's a process we have to go through, turn it on, and just for safety reasons, there's a process, we need to be there when you do that. Electricity is on everywhere in town, minus about 75 customers who still need their panels, redone, dried out, fixed. Please let us know when you're ready for that, and we'll get your power back on. Our debris contractor's been busy hauling away flood damage items. The county did borrow us their magnetic trailer, so we've been driving around town picking up nails, screws, pieces of metal that are on the streets. So, we're trying hard there to keep those from getting in anybody's tires. Next week will be the last week for curbside pickup. Dumpsters will remain available at 808 Seventh Street until further notice. With that being said, if anyone has extenuating circumstances, they haven't got all their stuff to the curb, whether it's insurance, whatever the reason, please call us. We're still here to help you out. So, we will still do that curbside. Cleanup continues at the pool. It will not be open till next year. We plan to utilize our lifeguard staff for park cleanup, other odd jobs that our normal staff can't get to. Swimming pool passes will be honored next season, and they're still honored at the Orange City Pool for the remainder of the season. That being said, Central Park has been cleaned and sanitized, all the equipment, so the Central Park is open right now. The park shelter house and our comfort station on the north side of the park by the camper pads were significantly damaged. We're waiting for an inspector to make a decision, so we can decide fixing or replacing those two items. Camper pads have been saved for those affected by the flood. Currently, they're full at this time, but if you're in need, contact Sioux County Conservation. And also, we were just notified that Hudson, South Dakota, has offered their, our residents, a discounted price for full hookups as well. And if you want to be put on a list for our camper pads in town, just call the office, and we'll put you on the list in case someone moves out of there, we'll get you in. That's my update.
Okay. Thank you. We also have Kim Mailes here, who is with the Red Cross. So, if you have any questions for him, he can try to answer some of them. Going to come up and speak a little bit first.
Hello, I'm Kim Mailes. I'm with the American Red Cross. And we've been in this area since the beginning. As this disaster has unfolded, we've done our best to provide comfort and support, release supplies, recovery assistance where we can, and we're grateful to the people here. We've found a warm welcome. We're grateful for what you've done for us. As you encounter a Red Cross person, I want you to realize that these, we've had about 300 come in and out of here during this flood disaster relief operation, and 9% of these people are volunteers. I'm a volunteer. They come from all over the United States. I'm from Denver, Colorado. I'm applying here to help folks after a disaster. So, when you meet a Red Cross volunteer, you're likely talking to somebody just like you, who is devoting their time to come and assist people after disasters. We set up shelters immediately in the area to shelter people immediately after the flood damage began to happen. We have two shelters that are still open with what the smaller population is dwindling day by day. And since that time, we've also been doing damage assessment in communities and all across this area, with teams of our Red Cross volunteers doing disaster assessment at homes, all up and down the roads, and farm roads, and in towns, to provide a database for us for financial assistance and other recovery assistance as that now, we move into that phase of the operation. We're still nailing down the details on the site, the date, and the hours. It looks like probably two days next week. I've been talking with Larry and Gary just a moment ago. It looks like we'll probably set up here at this location. And so, you likely will receive a text, some of you, from the American Red Cross, and know that that's not a scam. And we want to get ahold of you because we want to be able to provide you the assistance that we're able and that you are eligible for. I don't have a lot of other answers for you right at this moment, but just know that next week, we're going to be in your town, and we'd like to meet with you. And so, please come by. We want to meet with you. We want to assist you as we can, and as you are eligible. And I'll be hanging around here after the meeting, if any questions or something, I'll answer what I can. But I want you to know, we're going to be in your town two days, next week. We're nailing down the hours and all of that, but that information will be publicized, and many of you will be contacted, and we invite you to come. The American Red Cross is a charity. It's not a governmental organization, and we provide assistance to those that have experienced a disaster, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity. We just help people. And so, we want to be of assistance to this community, and you'll be hearing more from us.
Thank you, Kim, and we really appreciate the Red Cross. They've done a great job here. Had an opportunity to work with a lot of those folks, so appreciate them very much. At this time, we're going to open it up for questions or comments. We are recording this meeting, and we'll have it up on the city website, probably sometime tomorrow. And so, if you have a question or a comment, ideally, you could come up and speak in the microphone, so everyone can hear, and it'll get picked up for the recording. Otherwise, if you would stand and speak loudly, that would work too. So, who wants to start out with a question or comment?
I have one here in fact. When you were talking about the housing available in about eight to nine months, a lady over here asked, what price range are they looking at? And then also, my question was, is it houses or apartments that they're looking at building?
It's actually both. We do have a group of developers that are bringing in some prefab homes, that would be single-family homes. They're hoping the price point would hit somewhere around that $150,000 mark. We are teaming up with the SBA to offer 2.69% interest on those home loans, which would make them very affordable. That is, of course, basically on a first-come, first-served basis. We just started the process this week. Things are subject to change, but you're more than welcome to call my office, and I will certainly visit with you. There are apartments, townhomes, and homes that are going to be built.
Next. Oh, okay. Good.
My house is in a red tag, it's on the wavelength, could be destroyed and pulled away. What happens to that land? I am not going to rebuild. Is the city, would they be interested in buying it, or do I donate it to them for green space, or what? I will not rebuild on that lot.
I would just suggest that you maybe stop in at the city offices, and we can sit down and have a conversation about it. We have had some discussions about maybe at some point in some of these homes that aren't salvageable, that the city retains ownership through a quitclaim deed to the city, and then it becomes our responsibility at that point. So, I think that's something that we're working on yet, but I do think that will happen. Please stop in, and we can visit about that at your convenience.
Have you gotten a second visit from FEMA?
It's been red tags. I've got money from FEMA.
Okay. For your house?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Other questions?
I have a couple of questions. One, like all the money that the city is raising for late, to the bank account, to the Venmo, to the dinner, all that, how is that going to be dispersed to the victim? And if it's being raised for the victim?
Everyone hear that? Okay. The question was, with the money that's being collected through Venmo and at the banks, how that money is going to be distributed? Is it going to go to the victims of the flood? Gary?
Me? The council met last night. We had a council meeting, and we did bring that before the council. They're currently looking for four people to serve on a committee to make those decisions as to how that money's going to be distributed. So, please contact, again, you can contact the city offices. We'll get your name on, through the folks that are working on that process, and they will form a committee that will make those determinations. That has not been determined as yet, and we're hoping to get a very diverse group of folks on that committee, so that those decisions are sure to go to the people where the needs are. So, that's where the process is right now. Every victim has a need, but they're all different. They're all different.
So, once the house is in red tag, and it's not livable, who is responsible for the homeowners? Is it the owner, or do you want FEMA, or who is responsible for that?
Gary?
Larry? Unfortunately, we don't have answers to all these questions yet, but based on discussions that we had at the council meeting last night, I think the city is looking at, again, there are many factors involved, so it's hard to have just a blanket answer to some of these questions, but I think the city will be involved in demolishing some of those homes through a quitclaim deed again, and taking ownership. We're still working through the process, and of course, that costs money as well. And the city, the last thing we want to do is impact the residents of this community that have been devastated enough already with more taxes, or more utility costs, or higher fees of any kind. So, we have to make sure that we balance all those things. But right now, the plan, I think, is for the city to look at quitclaim deed, quitting a lot of those properties and tearing them down and taking ownership.
So, but the owner is still responsible for paying the taxes, and all that on the land, still, until that happens?
Yes, and I just sent a letter to our city attorney, actually, this afternoon, and I haven't got a response back from her with that very specific question, because as you know, taxes are one year in the rear, so your taxes you're paying in September of this year are for March of 2023. So, we're not only talking about last year's taxes, but we're talking about this year's taxes, and who's going to be responsible for those things. So, I'm still waiting for an answer back from our city attorney on that specific question, but that is a...so, I don't have an answer, I guess is what I'm trying to say, until we get back from her.
In regards to that, I have contacted the Sioux County legislature, to find out about the Central Avenue Road project that people are still paying for, at least I am. I paid it yearly. I didn't do a lump sum payment. So, if I quitclaim deed the property to you, am I still going to be responsible for that? I think I got two or three more years to pay on that Central Avenue project.
So, the question is...
Do I still pay it, or is the city one to do it?
When we put in the concrete on Central Avenue, that homeowners were required to pay, and it could be spread over years. And if the property is quitclaimed, would you still have to pay that?
Well, once a quitclaim deed is in place, you no longer own the property, so you won't be responsible for taxes beyond that point. But again, as we talked, some of those taxes are for the previous year, so we need to have that...we're still waiting for some discussion from the county attorney, or city attorney, excuse me, on the answers to some of the tax questions. We don't have...I don't have the answer for you tonight, to be honest with you, but we have requested the answer from our attorney, so we're waiting for that.
These are good questions, and I want to let you know that we asked FEMA to be here, and they were unable to be here. So, I will be taking any of the FEMA questions and passing them on to FEMA, and then I will post the answers that we get from FEMA on the city site and on my Facebook page. Yes?
Well, my situation, I was supposed to be on the priority list to have my house cleaned, if I volunteered or whatever. Well, before anybody could volunteer, I was red tag, and now all the food and guts is in there, it's been in there, all the belongings that aren't, isn't any good. What do I do with that? And the floors are, yeah, not safe.
And probably...
Is it possible to get demolished with all that stuff in it, or what?
Probably not safe for people to come in and clean or get anything out of it. Travis?
As it's demoed with the stuff in it, they'll have to separate appliances and food goods into separate piles, they will, when they tear it down. Yeah, because they can't go in to clean it when it's unsafe.
It's going to be awful. Could I just add something? Those of you that have questions about the tax issues, the assessments and the taxable information, if you could give me your name and address before the night's over, before you leave tonight, or name and phone number, actually, I will give you a call back after I get an answer back from the attorney, so I have an answer for you.
Yes. Tracy?
As far as the colors, the red tags mean it's unsafe to go in, the foundation is cracked, or the wall has come in. It's just unsafe for anyone to get in there until you either get a contractor to support that wall, or fix the wall. And it's totally a safety mechanism to keep you out, keep others out, because it's unsafe. If you go in to try and get a chair or something out of your house, and it were to fall in on you, you know, heaven forbid, we don't want...we made it this far, we don't want any more accidents. Yellow tag means it's questionable. Maybe they couldn't get into the basement, they couldn't see where they needed to see. So, it's just a kind of a question mark. It could be okay, they just weren't able to get in there and see everything they needed to make a firm decision. And then green, of course, it's safe to go in and do your work and everything.
And so, red tags don't necessarily mean that it's going to be demolished or condemned?
Correct. It's just unsafe to enter until a contractor or someone can get in and make that house foundation safe to enter.
Two red tags? Oh, boy.
There was a first round of tags that we went out and put on, and that was by the mayor, that we could see walls caved in. That was, we took it upon ourselves to try and keep everybody safe and keep people away from those homes. Then the inspector, the real inspector, state inspector, came around and then put his tag on there.
If you get three red tags, then you win the jackpot.
So, if the jacks are under the foundation, and there's no wall, can you take one of the red tags out?
If a contractor has came in and okayed that...
Well, we really don't have the contractor, it's for the landlord to do it.
Then maybe...
The city come in and look at it, since the city's the one to put it on?
Yeah, I think we'd get the inspector back and get his decision on that, and then we could remove that.
Yes?
Were all in-town makers inspected by the state inspector, or just ones that were blocking their attention?
He tried to make it to all of them when he was in town. He was only in town for two or three days. We gave him a list of the obvious ones, and he's making his way back around to get to those yellows and the ones that he didn't make it to. I know he didn't make it up on the north side of town. Correct. Yep. So, he'll hit the yellows, and then the ones he hasn't been to first.
Do we have any inspectors out there? They are hard to find. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Because my house hasn't been inspected at all, and I don't want to send anybody down in my basement to this bad. So, how do you get on a list to get your house inspected?
Yeah, I think you can call the city offices, and they will make a list, if there isn't already a list on there, to make sure that the inspector sees your house.
And that was the issue he was having. He couldn't get in to the homes if no one was there. He just did, you know, the walk-around inspection, and then those that he could contact, he went in and did the full inspection on the basement walls.
Yes?
I was told that they were going to do two inspections.
The question is, are they going to be, are they going to do two inspections? You're talking about FEMA, right?
Right.
I'm not aware of that, I guess, but that may be true, but I'm not aware of that. I haven't heard that. We do know they're coming back to do additional inspections, but I have not heard that they were going to do two inspections, so...
Would you repeat that, please?
A percentage of each inspection is after, for 100 inspections, you get a second inspection?
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what that percentage is, but the, as I understand it, the first time through is preliminary, to check for safety and such, and then you may get a second visit from FEMA, and that would probably be your last visit, and you would figure out what FEMA's going to do for you. Is that your understanding, Travis?
Yes.
I have a question. I guess more going forward, I know we had Red talks about floodplains, zones taken, too. Are we looking at that being an evil fairy tale, if the floodplains got better that way? You know, so that gave a lot for us, being able to move into a flood zone, floodplains, or not?
The last previous floodplain was in 84, and they... The last previous floodplain was in 84, and they just did a new one a couple of years ago. So the chances of them doing one, probably in 10 years. If you look at that, there's different colors. There's the red, that's the 1% chance of a flood, that's, they call that the 100-year. And then there's a light brown, I believe that that's called the 500-year flood. And we were well into that on this one. Well into that.
So we're good for 500 years?
They're looking at changing the wording on that from 100 years and 500 years to 1% and a half a percent. Because that's the chances every year that you could have that size of a flood.
Now, for anybody who receives money from FEMA, you've got to read your letter real closely, because the approval letter tells you when they're, that, like for me, I would, if I kept a house on that, or building on my lot, I would have to carry special hazardous flood insurance. Now, I could qualify for FEMA group flood insurance, and it's paid for three years, until the special hazard flood insurance question goes away, or they redo the floodplain, okay? But then after three years, I'm still in special hazard floodplain, I would still have to carry flood insurance at my own cost. So make sure that you do read that letter, because if you keep a building on your property that has been paid for by FEMA, and it says you need to carry that flood insurance and you don't, they can come back and take your money.
It's very good advice to make sure you read and understand the letters you get from FEMA. If you need some help with that, I'm sure the, you can bring it to the city offices and they would help you with that. But yeah, it's very important that you understand what you're signing. Yes?
What kind of zoning for rebuilding, you know, redoing this your house, if you're able to keep the shell and redo it, or if you need to put a new building on? What are zoning around here, or where do we find that information?
You can stop in the city offices anytime, we have zoning maps and we can meet with you, meet with you individually, because each location's going to be different in the community. So I'd be glad to sit down with each of you and talk about your zoning issues. And again, as you do build a new, or even update your existing facility, if you go beyond the current footprint of your house, then you do need a building permit, and if it isn't a floodplain, you need a floodplain permit to build anywhere as well. So stop in and we can talk to you about zoning issues and about what you would need to do to rebuild, or to build.
About the electric wiring in it? Is there any, like, the fuse box is completely underwater. Is there, what kind of, we have electricity now, but what are the steps, all the steps, are there any necessary steps that we need to be following?
Did you have an electrical contractor come in?
Electrician dried it out and turned it up and got it okay for the city to turn on?
From the city's perspective, that's adequate, I believe, Travis, is that correct? As long as we have a certified electrician, a licensed electrician, come in and do the appropriate needs at each home and the electrical needs that they have, and they've approved it, and then that's the only time we will turn the electricity back on. And once that's done, we feel that it's satisfactory. But we have to rely on certified electricians to make those determinations, so.
Yes?
I don't know, but something I've come across is the red tag homes, what's the mechanism for getting those approved? So, you know, if the homeowners do the work, or contractors do the work, who would have to approve that the same inspector that red tagged homes to be tagged to move? What's that process somewhere down the line, if you have somebody in town doing that? And in a month or whatever, regardless, somebody to say that and move that to, move that destination?
Well, FEMA actually put the red tags on, but-
Yeah, well-
Do you know if you would recount, if people are taking a while to get whatever you need to have, if they recount what's the reason they would get that red tag?
One thing we have been looking for is a building inspector that we would hire, because like we said, it's really hard to get, we had to get a state inspector here on the initial. And the city, I think last night, we discussed at the council meeting, a route to get a building inspector, either part-time or shared with another community that we would have full-time. So we would utilize our own building inspector at that point.
We wish that the process was a lot faster, but unfortunately, it's been complicated because of the breadth of the flood and how many communities were affected by it, and there's only a finite number of inspectors, and so it's going to take a little longer, I'm afraid. Other questions? Yes?
Is FEMA going to pay a displacement payment to these people who don't have a home, a place to live right now?
I think one of the payments, there's an initial payment for emergency needs, then there was a payment to stay in a hotel for a couple of weeks. Then there should be a rental assistance that's available for at 60-day increments, 60 or 90-day increments, and then you reassess every 60 days, and that, I think that can go up to 18 months. So make sure you're checking with FEMA on those options.
Do you sign up for that then?
It, yes, yeah. Yeah, when you signed up initially with FEMA, I assume you gave them your needs, and then those should have been options given to you. If not, call your FEMA representative and question those. Because those three are the things that they-
I just want to answer your question a little bit, just because I've been helping people with that same thing. And you need to-
Once you sign up for FEMA, and then you get that acknowledgement letter, and then they say, "We've received your application," and then there's probably five or six pages in there, and, you know, one of them, you have to fill a form out to send in, possibly. But in that letter, it'll say, it offers several things, rental assistance, all those things that he was just talking about. And they're the ones that should help with some displacement or rental assistance, those type of things.
What do you need about a letter yet?
Okay, and you signed up for FEMA, okay?
Did you get the initial 750?
Is that like five days ago?
Maybe.
Did you get a letter back yet saying, "We received your application"?
No, we, well-
Wait, you don't, okay, you said you had a landlord?
Yeah.
Okay, so yours is more, personal belongings?
Personal belongings, but we can't live there.
No, I know.
So we are-
So the letter you got back, is there any information in it that says?
We never really got a letter. I called FEMA, it was a FEMA hotline, and the lady that I talked to, she, because I told her, we never got a letter in the mail, or I never got an email. I've never gotten an email from them. And so she read me what was supposed to be sent, and it said that we got, we were getting the $750, but we were denied anything else because of insurance for replacement, you know?
Of personal property.
Because, and we could appeal that. Well, I've done that, I, you know, sent you a feeling, but as far as a letter or anything in that I've seen myself-
A paper, you should have gotten, I would think, a paper letter, even if you are just renting, and it will show options, unless they, so they like paid you for any personal property, and that was about it?
That was, all we had was like $750, and it was, I don't know, for living expenses.
And you called FEMA and said you didn't get any acknowledgement by mail?
Yeah, when I talked to, when I talked to her on the phone.
Did they give you a case number?
Yes.
Okay, stick with that one. And then there's, sometimes there's a FEMA number, it's four digits.
I have that.
Okay. And when you called her, did you give those to her? She should have been able to answer your questions.
I was told by our FEMA agent, who's fabulous, don't call the 800 number, go to Rock Valley, they're there during the week, and talk to the agent one-on-one, face-to-face, the 800 number, they don't know enough, they're not in our situation here, because they're in DC. Well, actually, she was at home, because I could hear her.
They don't, they don't know our situation. I kind of, I agree with you.
Can you go to Rock Valley and talk to the agent face-to-face? How long are they there? I don't know, but they're there, and they're supposed to do that, so they're at-
We can, city find out?
Mm-hmm.
Can the city find out when they're available at the, if it's every day from 8:00 to 4:00, or whatever? Where FEMA's, they set up offices like Rock Valley, and of course, it's probably Sheldon.
They decided to, they decided, but I know that FEMA decided to put a central location to assist Spencer, Haywarden, and Rock Valley.
And that's why they put it there, but I agree with her, because I've made numerous phone calls to that 800 number, and I got somebody different every time, and I didn't even get an answer. So I would suggest you go talk to them.
Go to-.
Yes. Take your ID number, your FEMA number, is, yes, I think that'd be a great idea.
If you would all call the-
I thought Sioux Center Mall, too, I thought I heard that, but I-
Sioux Center Mall is SBA.
It's what?
SBA.
FEMA will be in Rock Valley from 8:00 to 6:00 PM daily until further notice.
Okay. At Rock Valley?
At the city park.
At the city park?
Shelterhouse.
And then the SBA for businesses is in-
Sioux Center.
Sioux Center Mall. That's right. I knew there was two different things, but-
Do you go to the pool in Rock Valley? There's like a building here, a building there, it's like off the yard, so like, and this is the road, there's a pool, there's like two round buildings.
Okay.
On the other side, it's like back from the pool, there's like a new info shop.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to help you with your answer.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
This might be halfway off, or whatever, but with all the standing water around and everything, and with the increase in mosquitoes, is the city going to be needing more foggy? They came through once.
Yes, and they're due to come early next week. And when they do come around, they put briquettes out in this, any standing water to kill more mosquitoes from being born, made.
Health control for mosquitoes.
I can tell you, they came through Akron the second time, and the next day, they were just mean. It's nasty. So I'm not sure how much help is doing this year, there's so many of them, but it's got to help, I'm hoping, but.
So, and just, so on your note, I never got a letter either, but I get text messages from them with links, that gets me-
I never, I get, I don't know. I don't know why you do that.
Yeah, I just got, I just got a late today, and then that's-
In regards to the sewer plant, you said about upgrades?
Just a second, please. Okay, question in front.
In regards to sewer plant, you said about upgrades? One, what upgrades are being done? Two, how will it benefit the community? And three, what was the decision to make that upgrade? And if they're needed now, why wasn't it done four months ago?
Upgrades are probably the wrong word to use, because I really meant pumps that need to be replaced, the UV was inundated with water that needs to be replaced, it needs to be reseeded, so it can eat the organisms and clean the water before it goes out. Those are the type of things, flood-related, not any upgrades.
Would, and it like damage because of flood, or was it damaged beforehand because of that flood?
No, it totally damaged when it got inundated and flooded. All the pumps and electrical equipment, sensors, stuff like that. It was running good beforehand.
Probably to the tune of a half million dollars when we're done, so. Brutal.
Yeah, I used the wrong, wrong word, so.
It was brutal.
Next question?
What were you saying about the displacement thing that you got?
Well, I got a text message today from FEMA saying that, yeah, is that right?
Yeah, I got it just-
Saying that they have your number, or your name, or something with the hotels in the area, if you're displaced, that they'll pay for a certain amount of hotels or whatever, I don't know how long, but.
I think that's the 14 days, and then, but then after that, there's rental assistance beyond that.
Right, but sometimes you'll give more of an opportunity for the city and other people to get those rentals available and get those listings working.
Correct. I appreciate everyone bearing with us. You know, this is the first, you know, major flood for us, too. A lot of these questions, you know, we had to research and look up and find out how to do what we're doing. So this is good, you have good questions. If we don't know the answer, we're looking them up, we'll get back to you. Yeah.
So Kellaland News is reporting that 32 million gallons of partially strained sewage was poured into the Big Sioux River. What is the city of Haywarden and the state of Iowa doing to hold them accountable to that? And are there biohazards related to that that we should be ongoing out for?
We were doing the same thing, unfortunately.
Yeah, every, you know, every city above us lost, well, not every city, but a lot of cities lost sewer plants, and they bypassed, and things went into the rivers. So you got the Rock River inundated with sewage in their river. You have Canton and some towns above us, same thing, and it just exacerbates the problem by the time it gets to us. We had sewage that made it into the river as well. Everything went through the plant, but then it went over the walls and it was just inundated too, so I do not know what the DNR's plans are with.
I thought I heard in Sioux Falls, they weren't expecting a fine from DNR. But I guess, you know, when you have a disaster like this, it's, that's what happens, and the advice would be, if you're doing any cleanup of any kind, that you have protective equipment on, because as you know, it's nasty.
So the next time it happens, are they not fined also, or are you to expect it to be coming?
Well-
Because nobody did anything the first time.
I can't, I can't answer for the DNR in South Dakota. I don't know. That was just speculation, maybe from someone, but, and there might not be a fine, but there might be some things that cities have to do so that it doesn't happen again. I would expect that.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for.
So what is the city of Haywarden going to do to, like, just moving out of the city?
Unfortunately, the way most sewers work in every city is it's in the lowest portion of town, because it's all gravity-fed sewer down to the plant, and when the river's up so high, even if the plant's working and you're high and dry, there's no way to get that water out, there's just too much pressure. There's mitigation that we could, you know, raise around our plant so the water doesn't get in, but the problem we had before water even got into the plant, it was coming up over, because it didn't have the pressure to get back out.
That will definitely be something we'll be looking into in the near future, very near future.
We, and we may not have an option with the DNR, they may come in and tell us, these are the things that we have to do, so. We, we're looking for some guidance there as well at some point, so.
Question in back, yes?
Oh, so mine kind of takes me back a little bit, but the new housing, we are talking about the Delta.
Right now, we have two 12 plexes, 12 units in each building, there'll be two of those. We call it the old Sioux motel lots. It's actually located on Highway 12, or by our Calliope Village. There will be two apartment- There will be two apartment complexes built there. The other housing will be built up by Oak Hill. There will be some up there, or I'm sorry, Mike, the nursing home will be built up over there. And then we will have some coming on 16th and L.
And so, are you planning on developing on property that's already, that needs to be demolished, yeah?
One of the things that happens with these developments, these are private developers. The city of Haywarden itself does not become a renter or, you know, a leasor of properties necessarily. So private developers can be as creative as they want to be. They will face the same stringent or strict restrictions that anyone else building there would. You know, they got to meet, you know, they have to have a DNR permit, they got to meet the floodplain requirements. So chances are, they probably will not build down there, but I would never say never.
And keep in mind, as it sounds, the city may own some of these lots. So we have to figure out what we're going to do with them, because we don't want to mow them for the rest of our lives either. So that's just one more expense and one more additional maintenance cost for the city that we don't need, which by "we" means you guys. You know, you guys are the people that pay for everything the city does. So if we have more maintenance, it's going to be more cost to the folks that live here. So we want to avoid that. So I guess what I'm saying is, we hope to find some use for those, whether that, you know, and so the city doesn't have a forever maintenance task. But we don't have answers for that yet, but...
Parking lot?
Pardon me?
A big parking lot?
Yeah, yeah, that's, trouble is, they're scattered all over. It's not like there's one. There's many of them, and you're informed.
I called Vanderburg to see, you know, if I did rebuild on my lot for a one-bedroom, one bath, one car garage, minimum, minimum $250,000. And I said, "No, thank you. Except for three, I am not going to carry that large of a mortgage." So they, you've got to be careful on, you know, what you're going to do out there with people who are in contact if you're going to rebuild. So that was just one of the things.
Construction costs are already high, and unfortunately, when you have disasters, you become a source of predatory pricing, and, you know, prices go up again, because they can. And...
They had, they said, "He's running anywhere for five people a day since the flooding between the three communities for people coming in to get priced."
So we hope to work closely with some of the local contractors to at least get something affordable. By affordable, who knows what that number is, but different to everyone, of course. But we'll do our best to get it, get something reasonable.
Yes?
You did say that modular homes would be allowed on people's property?
Yes, ma'am. If they fit the zoning requirements, of course, you know, like everything else. But, yeah, they're, they're, they're an acceptable type of house in our one district, so...
Yeah, on a frost-free footing.
Yeah, frost-free footing.
On a frost-free footing. Or you could put it on a basement, but...
And a frost-free footing wouldn't require you to have a basement. Just, again, a frost-free footing with pillars would be adequate. But we can, we can talk individually about those requirements if anybody has any questions, but yes, they are allowable, so.
Anything else?
I want to catch the folks that have questions here.
Yes, Patty?
I just want to say, it's been heartbreaking to see all your losses. I've talked to many of you, seen your piles, and it's just heartbreaking and sad. I think the whole community is affected. And when they see all those piles and you lose everything, and even the city, you know, it's, it's just been a sad situation. And they want to help a lot, and I know, I'm on the city council, and we have had those discussions like, you know, Gary and Larry were saying, and Travis. And we will continue, especially with housing. You know, some of us just kind of coming together, and they will get it out to you. But I just, I just feel really bad for you for what you've all been going through and what I've seen. Just want to let you know that.
Another question, yes?
So the park, the last meeting with Red Sox, I said about any plastic toys that floodwater babies are like, are you guys, like, taking all of the other stuff now? Or what's going on with others?
Right, and he was referencing the, you know, baby toys that they're going to be chewing on, stuff like that. We sent, yeah...
My life, my identity, we got into every spot, we put all the stuff, got everything. Do you think that you were going to draw on, like, the back of the street, the street? But the first 15 years, that's where you want them. We had five, and then for open, go through that part, and we made everything up top. That's cool. I was wondering.
Yeah, so I mean, as long as you're not gnawing on it, it's...
Yeah. Yeah, we're...
Yeah, but I mean, you know, for just normal play, it's safe.
Well, thank you all for coming and for your questions. And if you think of any other questions, please contact the city offices. And we wish you the best, and have a good night.
Thank you, guys. (APPLAUSE)
Who's going to ask that? Well, they call pre-ban, they call much. Like he said, yes. Oh, yeah. Good, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
So, I just think it's something that I can say, it's really important. Because there are a lot, there are a lot of things that they all see in the lot.
Oh.
Yeah, okay, yes. Thanks.
That's what I saw. Right.
Hi.
Hi.
I can, I was...
That's what we're trying to...
I can, I was...
I can, I was...
Anyway, they are very happy.
Right.
Right.
Whatever.
Well, maybe.
Like, I said, then you...
I don't have them.
(INAUDIBLE).
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I said.
I was...
I was...
I was...
Right.
No, I'm...
Well, we have, yeah, yeah, I called Mark.
Ready to go, right here at our...
But it'll be, it'll work out well.
Those, yeah.
They'll get their name.
We have other lots around, and we can do it.
Have those two.
There, I don't think it's going to be found.
Hold on.
Okay.
Monday, see you Monday.
You're in here.
All right.
Sounds good.
Everybody, but...
(INAUDIBLE).
Look around the first line.
He went to...
Well, I haven't seen any details.
I mean, they're going to be helping.
I don't know.
New website and stuff.
It was just too soon.
All in a day, right?
He needs to get in the car with that, drive around and learn what that actually is for Haywarden.
Positive, in my opinion.
I, I, I was...
(INAUDIBLE).
But they bring up questions that now you can do.
But I definitely, I listen to it on the radio.